So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Sergeant at Arms or Designee has the front lobby be attended to ensure public access. Thank you. The school board meeting of September 7th, 2022 is now called to order. The time is 6:08. Today, our student performances, thank you all for being here, I'm sorry about the rain. Prior to the start of this evening's meetings, we have been enjoying the music from the Dunbar High School Marching Tigers. The Marching Tigers are under the directions of Leroy, what they call Doc Irving. They will be a featured group at the Mayor's Diverse City Festival on Saturday, September 24th, and will be hosting an annual Dunbar Band Jamboree again in the fall. Please give these performers another round of applause, and they will be playing one more song for us before they leave.
Good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Doc Irving. Thank you. It is beautiful when you see our students saying, "This is a representation of our kids." I mean, seriously. Okay, we would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district vision to be a world-class school system. Tonight on the agenda, it includes invocation, presentation of colors, and pledge of allegiance, two items under acknowledgement, two items under recognitions, public comments, consent action items, which include two items under Board Office, three items under academic services, two items under business services, two items under human resources, five items under operations, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda as printed.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Givenelli. Okay, it has been moved by Ms. Fisher and seconded by Ms. Givenelli. Please record your vote. Yep, my system went down. I don't know if anybody else had a problem. Is everybody else okay? Okay, 7-0, motion carries. Ms. Givenelli will lead us in the invocation, after which Ms. Vaughn will lead us in the presentation of colors and the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Givenelli, please introduce your guests, Pastor Quay Crenshaw for the invocation. Thank you.
Please rise. Pastor Crenshaw, can you go to the podium there? Yes, and make sure your mic is on. Thank you. Pastor Crenshaw is the new pastor of the next level church in downtown Fort Myers. Pastor Crenshaw was born and raised in Lakeland, Florida. Pastor Crenshaw has been in Lee County since 2006, in which he attended Florida Gulf Coast University. Along with his lovely wife Lisa, together they have three amazing sons, Jalen, eight years old, Kyrie, three years old, and Na'am, one year old. Pastor Crenshaw is excited to be launching their fourth location in downtown, in the downtown community, growing in relationships and partnerships, and aiding in improving the quality of life. Pastor Crenshaw, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you. Such an honor, such a privilege. Let us pray. Father, we thank you, God, for all that you are doing. God, we thank you, Father, God, that you are moving beyond measures. We thank you, Lord, for all that you are doing, God, in our school system, God. We pray over each and every teacher, each and every student, Father, that may you continue to bring unity, Father, God, may you continue to keep them safe. God, we pray ahead of protection just over all of our schools, all of our superintendents, God, our teachers, our faculties, Father, may you keep them safe over the school year. Father, God, we pray that over, that in this time, God, that you continue to unify the board members, God, that you continue to unify this room, Lord, that we, may our hearts be open to all that you are doing, Father, that you may lead us and guide us, God, in your direction, Father, that there'll be no personal agenda, Father, God, but it be all for you, Father, God, that you will be glorified at the end of the day, God. We lift you up, we praise you, we honor you, we give you all the glory, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn, please lead us in the presentation of the colors of the pledge of allegiance.
Introducing the cadet who will present the national colors tonight is Command Sergeant Major Sergio Ortega, Army Instructor for the Cypress Lake High School JROTC Program. Sergeant Major Ortega retired from the United States Army in 2018 after 30 years of distinguished service in positions of increasing responsibility. This is Sergeant Major Ortega's fourth year as an instructor in the district, and thank you for your service, Sergeant Ortega.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna speak out loud.
Good talk.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Presenting the national colors tonight is Lieutenant Colonel Natalie Frabel. Cadet Frabel is a senior at Cypress Lake High School and an outstanding example of leader and citizen. She is a top cadet in her JROTC program and has served as a varsity member of the Panther Raider Team, Drill Team, and Color Guard. Natalie is a member of the wrestling team and the prestigious National Society of High School Scholars. After high school, she plans to attend the University of South Florida and Army ROTC to pursue her career in nursing. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I-
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening's student representative is Rhea Daly. Rhea is an applicant of the Student Advisory Committee. She is a junior at North Fort Myers High School and currently has a cumulative GPA of 3.85. Rhea is an astute learner who is very invested in academics and receiving a perfect FSA, math score several times. Rhea also earned a variety of high scores on her other test exams, which include the highest cumulative score on the Microsoft Bundle Exam in 2021, rewards for straight A's in her freshman and sophomore years with Ace and Honor Classes. Rhea plans to become a school psychologist by studying in the Ivy League's Brown University of Rhode Island. Please welcome Rhea. Now, Rhea is going to do the character word for September.
This starts the acknowledgements. The character word for September is acceptance, recognition of the diversity of others, their opinions, practices, and culture with a favorable reception. The design you see displayed on the screen was created by Jade Nielsen, a 12th grade student at Mariner High School. The school board of Lee County acknowledges the following events for the month of September of this year, 2022. National Payroll Week, September 7th to the 11th, 2022. Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, September 17th, 2022. Do the Right Thing Month, September 1st to 30th, 2022. National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 1st to 30th, 2022. And the theme of 2022 is Unidos Inclusivity for a Younger Nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is recognition. Board members and superintendent, please join me in the pit. The first one will be the Microsoft State National Championship, by Ms. Patrico will be doing that, and then the second one will be the state winners of the Florida Commissions of Status of Women contest, and that will be by Ms. Givenelli. Please join me. Good evening. Am I on? It feels like a celebration of Dunbar High School, does it not? As I call Mr. Carl Burnside, the principal of Dunbar High School, to the podium to please join me.
Mr. Carl Burnside would call himself the proud principal of Dunbar High School, not just the principal of Dunbar High School. I'll take this minute to say my daughter was there, so I heard that introduction for four years. The school district of Lee County is proud to announce that four Dunbar High School students are the 2022 CertiPort Microsoft Office Specialist Florida State Champions. The 2022 state champions are, and as I say your name, if you could join me and sort of form a line behind Mr. Burnside, I would appreciate it, and I'm going to kill your names. Andrew Chung Saladin in Excel 2016, Carson Mulvey in Excel 2019. Carson is not with us today because he is attending Florida State's flagship university, Florida, UF University of Florida. Isabel Liu in Microsoft, I'm sorry, in PowerPoint 2019, Jan Z Parza in PowerPoint 2016, and the 2022 national champion, Andrew Chung Saladin in Excel 2016. So, all four students were invited to complete in the Microsoft, I'm sorry, compete in the Microsoft Office Specialist U.S. National Championship in Dallas, Texas in June. Junior Andrew Chung Saladin won his second Microsoft Office Specialist U.S. National Championship. Andrew was the 2022 national champion for Excel 2016. In 2021, he was the state, national, and world champion for PowerPoint 2019. He is Dunbar's seventh national champion and the first to win a national title twice. The first to win a national title two times. As national champion, Andrew wins $3,000, a trophy, medal, and a certificate honoring his achievement, and an all-expenses-paid trip to the 2022 Microsoft Office Specialist World Championship at the end of July in Dallas, Texas. Since Dunbar High School began competing in 2011, the school has had 29 state champions, seven national champions, and the rare distinction of having not one, not two, but three world champions. Dunbar High School state championship recipients, as I call your name, please come on up, shake my hand, shake all of the board members' hands, and then stay for a picture. Andrew Chung Saladin in Excel 2016, come on up. Congratulations. Carson Mulvey again is a Gator at UF, he is not here tonight. Isabel Liu in PowerPoint 2019. All right, and then we're gonna give a second round of applause to Andrew Chung Saladin for Excel 2016 as the Dunbar High School national champion. The school board and superintendent are pleased to recognize our state championship recipients and national champions, Andrew Chung Saladin, Carson Mulvey, Isabel Liu, and Jan Z Parza, for representing the school district of Lee County in this state competition.
Thank you.
I would like to invite Jen and Persson's Maluka to please join me at the lecture. Two Lee County students are being recognized for winning the first place in the Florida Commission's on the Status of Women sponsored contest. The video submission contest was open to all high school and middle school students. The contests were held statewide from November 1st, 2021, to February 28th, 2022. Autumn, Pepper Rhodes, a student at Cypress Lake High School, won first place in the video submission contest. High school students were required to submit a 30-second public service announcement featuring the Florida women scientist living or historic who has or is shaping the future. In addition to her recognition, Autumn will receive a certificate of letter from the Governor DeSantis and $250. Nishisha Ferrando was a student at Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School, won first place in the eighth-grade essay contest. Middle school students were required to write an essay about a Florida woman inventor or STEM professional living or historic who inspired them and why they might like to meet the person. In addition to her recognition, Nishisha will receive a certificate, a letter from Governor DeSantis, and $100. The board members and the superintendent are pleased to recognize and congratulate Autumn Pepper Rhodes and Nisha, I'm sorry, I'm saying that wrong, and I apologize, Ferrando on the accomplishment, and thank these students for representing the school district of Lee County and this state competition.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Ms. Pri Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in and will be made from the podium in the front of the center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Abuse of language is prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper during the public comment time is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. We will take recesses as necessary if there is not decorum. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20, two minutes if there are 30, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allowed for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone, and I will call you five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Madam Chair, there are four speakers that wish to address the board this evening.
Thank you. Please make sure you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comments. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located in the hallway with staff.
The cards are located in the hallway with staff. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but did not fill out a comment card? Please raise your hand. Okay, Mr. Prey Bruno, will you go ahead and proceed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the following individuals, please line up. Sharon McGill, Tara Jenner, Kristi Divageli, Lou Navarro.
Good evening, Sharon McGill. No notes, no phone, it's going to be ad-libbed tonight. I just want to say, I had the opportunity to see the proximity plan earlier this year that was presented at a meeting, and it was a lot to comprehend. But I have to admit, in the past couple days, I watched a podcast by Dr. Malloy, and it all fell into place. It all made sense. He talked about the history, you know, of when school choice started, when the district was only 50,000 students. And now look where we are today. And things have to change and progress to keep up with what's going on. So I immediately sent that out to all my Facebook pages because I think everybody needed to see that and understand it because it made sense. So kudos to Dr. Malloy. Is he out in the hall still? Isn't it? I told you I was going to embarrass you. Now, that it was an amazing presentation, and everybody should be watching that podcast. Now, I respectfully request that something similar to that be done for the referendum. Now, I know the board can't recommend or endorse anything, but they can certainly put the facts out there and show the differences, like the presentation that was done by legal services. And I've used that a few times myself, taking out a couple of pages that I didn't think were pertinent. But to do something similar to that, that we can get out to everybody because it's not being talked about enough, and it needs to be, really. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tara, good evening. As most of you know, I'm a bit of a constitutional buff. And in honor of Constitution Day, September 17th, I've secured a renowned constitutional expert by the name of Colonel Idsmo to come to Lee County. John Idsmo is a retired Air Force Lieutenant Colonel, retired Alabama State Defense Force Colonel, current Mississippi State Bar Chaplain in rank of Colonel, and a graduate of the Air Command and Staff College and the Air War College. He's a professor of law at Oak Brook College of Law and Government Policy, and he has served as a senior staff attorney with the Alabama Supreme Court and is currently Senior Counsel and Resident Scholar for the Foundation for Moral Law. He holds seven academic degrees in law, theology, history, and political science. Colonel Idsmo will be offering three teachings on the Constitution. Starting Friday, September 16th at 6:30 p.m., he will be at Gateway Church, which is located at 13241 Griffin Drive in Fort Myers. On Saturday, September 17th, after he attends the Daughters of American Revolution brunching, he will be speaking at 1:30 p.m. at Diplomat Wesleyan Church located at 1833 Diplomat Parkway in Cape Coral. As you can tell, Dr. Idsmo has an awful lot of energy and enthusiasm for the Constitution. He also is scheduled to do a third speaking event that evening. The location and time is to be determined, and it will either be in the Estero Benita area or in the Alva area in the evening. Each presentation will cover a different topic pertaining to the Constitution. More details and a flyer will be forwarded to the board and the superintendent once the third location and the topic items are specifically confirmed. And I would just respectfully request that this educational opportunity be shared with staff, teachers, and students, including the homeschool students that are registered through your home ed office. And I encourage everyone on the board to attend as many or all of them as you can because I think you will find that his discussions and his knowledge on the topic is going to be just phenomenal and something very worthwhile for everyone. Thank you very much.
Kristi Divageli, I feel like there's a full moon tonight or something. Sharon was only, took two minutes, and Tara still had 30 seconds to go. First, I'd like to start by thanking the superintendent for the town hall at Calusa Elementary. It was amazing. There were so many people there, lots of parents, lots of really good questions. Being a native, it was really nice to see the district respond to, you know, what some of the parents that are coming here from outside of the state, from other states, are experiencing, thinking, you know, what they were going to experience and then coming here and it being totally different. So I think the district did really well. I think Dr. Bernier, got to give you a lot of credit there, you did a great job. All right, I also like, I have lots of thank yous today, which is weird. I'd like to thank Ms. Gittens and Ms. Vaughn for their comments in today's briefing meeting regarding board advisory committee appointments. You know, I can always count on the both of you to stand up for the marginalized. And I shudder to think of how the number of times that parents and community members' concerns would have gone unaddressed had it not been for the both of you. So I only hope that, you know, your predecessors will make similar choices, you know, when given the opportunity. In regards to the board advisory committee appointments, I was happened to take a look at just the most recent ones, and I noticed that there were at least four of them where recycled members from a term ago, so this would be their second, at least, second term. I couldn't find anything before that. And I do think that there does need to be some kind of term limits or something like that. I would like to publicly thank, I already know who did this, but who I think did it at least, would like to thank whoever appointed Jaclyn Perez after 10 years, finally, getting appointed to the EDAC Committee. I certainly hope that it won't take me 10 years to get appointed to a committee, just saying. What else? I think that's, look at that, I have a minute left, too. I think that's about it. I think you guys have been doing a great job keeping on time. And, oh, I had one more question. This is for the super. What are school improvement recognition dollars? Just, you mentioned it earlier, and it kind of went, ding, and I thought about that. So that's all I have for tonight. Thanks, guys.
Good evening, Superintendent, School Board, Lou Navara. I want to recap quickly the encouraging teacher hiring and retention from two weeks ago. Raise teachers' salaries to $60,000, starting. Cover the 3% for the FRS retirement. Pay full health insurance. We know you give them $100 raise and their health insurance goes up for family 200. Restore professional services contract. Protects them and the First Amendment. That's what people forgot about. Eliminate certification tests. That's Jeb Bush's investment. Pay for a master's degree in a field like he used to, and you paid me. Stop making education political and picking on the teachers. Pay for courses like you used to at FGCU or SFW. Now, when I was at Florida State, grad school for education, I don't know why I took it anymore, but ed administration, I learned one thing. They said, if you're going to criticize, have something to put in. All right, so I have found money on the old budget where you're going to be able to afford these things because I look at this old budget, lot of waste. Okay, we have instructional staff training. Why do we need, why do we need $14 million? Board of Education, 1.7 million? What are you guys doing up there? It's a labor of being a, you know what I mean. Okay. General Administration, $9,000,000.9. School Administration, $57,000,4. Well, that'd be okay, but I don't know why the administrators really don't support teachers anymore. Anyway, pupil transportation services, $62 million. Mr. Lloyd needs to cut that back. You know why? We don't need school choice. We're fully integrated. It's a mess. So as we come down to the other $393 million reserves, that's a lot of money you carry over every year. When I was in the teachers' union, we always looked at that. So total, I have saved up here like $500 million that you can add to the 628 for the instruction, and voila.
How to do heart surgery?
Sir, your time has come to an end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment, Madam Chair.
Okay, first I'd like to say, of course, we appreciate you all coming and letting us hear your concerns and your comments. I also watched the podcast. I thought that was excellent. Dr. Malloy and Mr. Spicker did a great job on that, and I absolutely share that. I do recommend everybody watch that podcast. It was extremely good. We do a lot of good podcasts, and they're very informational. Also, we did have a conversation regarding the advisory committees, and we will go have more conversation in the future. I know all of us have different things that we do to make sure that we are, you know, looking at who is in our districts. And I know I personally do as well, look, and I know who's in my district, and I have those conversations with every single one of those people before making a decision. So I know we will be working on that. As far as, Mr. Navarro, thank you for always coming and sharing. And Ms. Jenner, thank you for sharing your information with us. And we will move on to the next item, which is the approval of the consent action items. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available for board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the materials, and we have the opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business tabled items portion of the agenda? Ms. Fisher?
I have no pulls this evening.
Okay, Ms. Javonelli?
I have none.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
I have none, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
I have none.
Thank you. And Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
Thank you. And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda consent items? Ms. Vaughn?
I move to approve the agenda consent items.
I second.
Thank you. It has been moved by Ms. Vaughn and seconded by Ms. Gittens. Please record your vote. Is everybody able to? Ms. Thomas? Thank you. Motion carries, 7-0. Next, we are actually down to board member comments. So I will start with Ms. Fisher.
Would there, Madam Chair, were there any announcements of people?
No.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Is your light on, Ms. Fisher?
Okay. I want to bring up the fact that Mrs. Sharon McGill mentioned about the referendum in November. The November 2022 general election ballot includes a referendum for voters that essentially asks, shall the school district of Lee County superintendent be chosen by the voters or the boards? As with any legislative initiative, there are multiple facts for voters to consider. So our school board attorney shared a PowerPoint with the board that illustrates the path of this issue in Lee County and the facts associated with the different models of superintendent selection. So I would like to suggest that we discuss that a little bit this evening. I know some of us board members are contacting principals to request an opportunity to meet with their PTO or SAC, school advisory committees, or their faculty during September and October. And it will be an education, an educational overview of the referendum. And as a board member, of course, we won't share our personal opinions or make a recommendation to the office, to the audience. And so I would just like to suggest that perhaps other members of the board would like to join us in visiting the numerous schools we have, educating people and making sure that they all have the facts and are prepared for the November referendum.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. So you're asking for?
Yes, and then I have a couple more comments, but I wanted to see.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I, at this time, would be interested in doing it. I wasn't aware that other board members had chosen my district, but I would still like to participate. At the time that we discussed it on the board previously, I was in the middle of a campaign, so I did not feel it was necessarily appropriate for me to do it at that time. And now that that is concluded, I would like to be included in the process, if possible.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Morgan, and then Ms. Vaughn, please.
So I think you all know, based on my comments this afternoon, I've reached out to everybody, all the principals in the East Zone, to ask them to invite a board member to speak to the SACs and the faculty. I'm happy to share that list with you and work out a schedule whereby we can both meet with people in the East Zone. Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn, please.
Well, I'm going to somewhat repeat what Ms. Gittens had said. I had no idea that there was any kind of an organized effort to split up the different schools. Nobody invited me to do that, and although I'm not going to be on the board after mid-November, I'm still a member of this community, and I would also like the opportunity to do this. As an at-large member, again, everybody represents all of the districts, but as an at-large member, I guess I could say I don't have the more... but as an at-large member, I guess I could say I don't have the more, the close, the close relationships that some of you have with the number of schools that you have in your district. Also, I only have, at this point, one grandson and one school. And so, at any rate, I'm somewhat disappointed that this wasn't mentioned earlier that there was this apparently semi-organized effort. And I don't know who started it, but I am disappointed. And I know that on this board, there have been numerous times when fingers have been pointed, often right here, and not being cooperative. But I'm just a little concerned about not being consulted.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, if I may too, because I know that this topic has come up multiple times in conversations with, with people going out. I had no idea either that people were going out to wherever. The only thing I've heard, if I'm out in the community, of course, I am hearing things when I'm out there of other people part, you know, doing and speaking on this because they felt that it is important to them. That's what I have heard out there. But we have brought this up here at the, at the DIA'S multiple times, and it really didn't move anywhere with that. So I just wanted to make sure that that was put out there as well. And I know, Ms. Morgan, you had your hand up?
No, you've covered it. Thank you.
Okay. And Ms., I'm going to go back to Ms. Fisher, and then Ms. Gettens.
Okay. And that's exactly, that's exactly why I brought it up. There are members of the community who are speaking about it and asking questions. I've been approached multiple times, and I think it is incumbent on us as board members to educate the public about the facts. And we have a perfect opportunity to do that with the information that our legal department prepared for us. And I think that as many of us who can be actively involved in this and get the message out to our community through our schools, I think we should take advantage of that opportunity and work together as a team and put the past in the past and move forward. So I hope that we can all take part in this and visit some of the schools and provide the information to parents, staff, and voting-age students.
Thank you. Ms. Gettens, please.
And I mentioned this today. If we go back to our last, maybe it was last three meetings, this was a motion that was brought up by Ms. Patrica. And at the time, I believe it did not pass. The board collectively did not want to do it at that time. So that was my last recollection of this discussion. I remember there was a vote on it.
Ms. Jevonelli?
Ms. Gettens brings up, brings that up, but that, that motion was to use district resources to, to go out and educate the community. And I believe that the board attorney advised us that there was a law that prohibits us from doing that and spending district resources. So I think that's really important to, to note. I, at this time, I didn't support it then, and I don't support it now. The people are going to vote. This, to me, is just a reactionary thing that we're doing, and it's, you know, we're way past that. I felt that we should have been dealing better and working better with our relationships with the legislator to stop it to happen, from happening to begin with. That was my whole concern with hiring a superintendent and him falling prey to having to campaign, you know, after November. And so that was my concern. So I'm just going to remind everyone of the things that I thought was important at the time. I was not, it was not agreed upon at the, at the DIA'S. But I think that the reason why we have an elected superintendent on the referendum is because of this board and not doing the duties that they were elected to do. And so I think that it's a little late in the game because we're like less than a month away before the mail-in ballots drop. So I just would remind everybody of that. I won't be participating. I will let the voters decide at this point. Thank you.
And it is, as individuals, absolutely, each and every one of us can do whatever we deem. And I absolutely do not believe that it has anything to do with us as the individual board members. That's my opinion on that one. Ms. Vaughn?
I just want to reiterate, yes, I've paid attention. Yes, I've listened to the discussion. I just heard Mrs. Fisher talking about working as a team. It's been my experience, very unfortunately, and I'm going to just put it out there, that the team is typically four board members. And, you know, this, I'm not going to be here, so it might be easier for the four board members, or actually, it's going to be perhaps less than that, definitely less than that. And, you know, things like that definitely factored into the reason that I decided not to run for reelection. The whole idea of what a team is and the fact that the team is only the team if everybody agrees, that disagreement is verboten. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, and Ms. Gettens, please.
I just want to say that having just come off of a campaign, and no, I'm not going to get into politics, but I want to say the reason that I believe we should go with the facts to the public is because of the many, many, many misconceptions that I ran across when I was running for office. I mean, I was accused, I was told, you did this, you did that. The public sometimes believes that they are educated, but they are educated sometimes in, in one direction and need to hear all sides of the story, just like they need to do when they decide to vote. And I think if we can clarify some things. I've spoken to people about this, and they, at first, are like, oh, no, I, you know, that's really a good idea, or whatever. And then we talk about it, and you can see them start to think about it. And I just believe that when people are voting on something, they should have all the pieces of the puzzle in, in their minds to make their decision based on facts. So that was the only reason, and I did not want to do it before. But like I said, I do now, just to educate people on facts, not to give an opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Gettens. Ms. Patrica?
So you've all, you've inspired me to provide a fact at each meeting going forward. There are approximately thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty-seven school districts in the United States of America. One hundred and forty-two of them have an elected superintendent. That means one percent of school districts have an elected superintendent. Alabama is the only other state that allows for this model of having an elected superintendent, and we are not in good company with Alabama. Because if you look at the rankings for school districts across this nation, Alabama is frequently ranked last. I think the highest I saw them ranked was forty-eighth, and that included DC and Puerto Rico. That is my fact of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Okay. That being said, then, anyone who wishes to work with us, we'll get together and work out a schedule as we get responses.
You can't get together.
Oh, yeah, you can.
Ms. Dupree Bruno?
So you want to?
Just to decide where to go.
Just the schedule.
Who goes where.
Repeat what you said, Ms. Fisher. I'm sorry. You want to do a?
Anybody who would like to visit schools to educate the public can get on the schedule. I mean, we'll, we'll have to respond to them as they invite us to come.
So it's not an issue coming before the board, and it's not an issue that can be?
Are the mics on? Please.
I'm sorry. I am doing legal analysis in my head, so I'm probably talking out loud. I'm thinking of sunshine. It's not a, an issue that's coming before the board for a vote or foreseeably can come before the board for a vote because this is something that's going to the public. So, so long as we are only talking about a schedule to go to different communities to just talk about this topic from an educational standpoint only, so I caution board members to make sure we stay within the guidelines.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Fisher, do you want to continue on with your comments, please?
Yes, and I was just going to thank Doc Irvin and the Marching Tigers for the wonderful start to the meeting tonight. I'd like to welcome Ria and thank her for being with us tonight. We appreciate that. And I also would like to congratulate, again, our award-winning students and their teachers and their parents because we have kids who are achieving and accomplishing every day, and they make us proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Jevonelli, please.
I will be quick and brief tonight because I can't believe we're, it's only seven oh four, and we're at this point in our meeting, so, good job. I just wanted to welcome the, the student, and I actually, I'm very impressed by your resume. I like, I wanted to touch you because I'm like, I was so impressed. So that's awesome. Your credentials are amazing. So I had to ask, because I missed the school, I had to ask what school. So she, Debbie told me North, so impressive. I really, don't really have much more than that. I just wanted to talk about the advisory. I know it was brought up that the advisory committees, I always pick the people from my district as well, and so, and give it great thought. And I think that, I think it's wise that we can talk about this so that our reorg, I think it was brought up later, and we might as well just do that at this point. I think discussion, we used, at the reorg is usually when we would pick at that time, like in November, and so we moved that up earlier. So that probably can come up for a topic, and also a term limit is, you know, has been raised by the public, and I think that, that it's probably not a bad idea. I think figuring that out at the reorg is a great idea. I just wanted to bring that up. I, I know Dr. Bernier brought up College Night. I think that was September seventeenth, or nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. Because I saw that, I saw that on our Facebook post, and I thought that was great, that College Night's back, so I'm, great job that the district's doing that. I think we're getting back to the norm, thank goodness. And then there was a vendor night. That's at the end of the month as well, if I'm not mistaken. And that, we had that prior to the pandemic as well. And I thought that these things that we did before the pandemic is bringing us back to the norm and the way it's going to be after much time, everybody's social distancing. So I'm excited about those events, and I encourage college students and to, or our students to attend College Night and that are thinking about college. And I also am encouraging vendors. We would love to work and have you work for the district. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you. I gave my report this afternoon.
Thank you. And Ms. Gettens?
Okay.
Please.
Thank you. I'm losing my place in my notes here. I wanted to mention the event that a few of us went to on Saturday night, the Black Men Who Rock. Not that white men and everybody else don't rock too. Everybody rocks. But this was, this was an event to celebrate the black men in the community that have done successful things to help the community. And it was fabulous. It was very good. In twenty eighteen and nineteen, I think I was a Black Woman Who Rocked, so there you go. But this was, and our, the keynote speaker was Mr. Jared Eady, and he had the whole room rocking. He had, at the very end, it was very impressive and a very good speech. So that was a very nice thing. We have some other events that are coming up that we'll talk about as well. I have been asked by a couple people several times about how we choose the chair and the vice chair. And in some areas, it is rotated so that there are opportunities for everyone to do it. And I don't know, this was set prior to me getting on the board, so I don't know how that was decided, but I just wanted to throw that out. I said that I would, would ask about it. What else? Something else, and I didn't write it down, so I can't remember now. Welcome to you. Thank you so much for being here. And I had a question for the superintendent. I know that, through the chair, I know that in your presentations, and thank you so much for those town halls, and I have had questions about why were they chosen and selected to be in certain areas? There will be more, and the superintendent will address that. So he can give you his answer that he gave to me. But we will reach all different areas in the future as we have these. And if it's appropriate, this, during your comments, Superintendent, if you can do just a brief update on transportation, just to let people know we're still working and, and trying to fix that. I know that that affects so many people, not just the parents, but it also affects the community. I've had calls from people saying they can't get out of their driveway or get to where they need to go, but we are working on it. And so I'll leave that to you, just to make a short update. I suggest that if you have the opportunity to go to the town halls, there will be one this Thursday, tomorrow, at, in the south.
San Carlos.
San Carlos Park. And then I'm going to do a commercial for the one that will be in the East Zone the following Thursday, and that's going to be at, Superintendent, I forgot. Tortuga? Tortuga Elementary, right on Gunnery. So everybody that's, that wants to come out and come to that area, if you have a question and you haven't been able to make it here to the board meetings because it's just not convenient for you, we're coming to you. So I'm saying to my Lehigh and District Five family, come out, see what we're doing in the district, and ask your questions in a smaller, you know, venue. And I'm sure it's going to be much, much worth your while. So I thank you. I still thank all the staff, and especially the teachers and administrators that are out there. We don't hear enough about giving them their roses. It's not an easy job right now. There's a lot of balls in the air that they are trying to juggle at the same time. And I just always like to let them know, we, we know that you're, you're juggling and working very, very hard, and we appreciate anyone who has anything remotely to do with children, and that's all of us. So have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gettens. Ms. Vaughn?
Thank you. Regarding the proximity plan, I had out-of-town company this past weekend, so I wasn't able to make the first town hall, but I'm looking forward to going tomorrow night to San Carlos Park Elementary. Proximity plan is something that's been near and dear to my heart. Actually, before it had a name, before it was, before we had Davis Demographics, it was something that, actually, before I even ran for school board. was something that, actually before I even ran for school board and was working at Astero, I had a lot of comments about, well, why aren't we doing the vertical teaming here? Oh, well, and I got the explanation, and why aren't we doing this or that? Or, gosh, it would be nice if we had more team spirit for, for some of the high schools that aren't the, the icons that have, that were like the original high schools in, in Lee County. And all of those questions that I had circled back to the fact that I was very used to from my own adult children, when, where they went to school, where I taught in, in the past, the benefits of having what we called the neighborhood schools. And of course, I learned after I started running for school board and got a little bit more informed on exactly why neighborhood schools, given the, the land that is owned by the school district and where prior schools are built, et cetera, et cetera, why that was going to be difficult. And of course, I became schooled, well, actually, I was schooled early on and totally shocked when I learned how late in the game this school district became integrated. As, as a Jersey kid, that child of the Northeast, that was quite shocking to me, and I, you know, I learned all the facts on, on that. So it's something that, when we engaged Davis Demographics, I expected as a board member that we would move swiftly on that. We had actually two superintendent transitions, and I'm going to thank Dr. Bernier for putting this, I'm going to call it the fast track. It's not really the fast track at all because we've been talking about this for what, like three years, something like that. But I guess I'm the kind of impatient person that when I see what I've considered all along, the waste in transportation, where buses, where five buses go down the street and take the kids that might be next door neighbors to five different schools. But I'm not going to get into all of the other amazing things that everybody benefits from when the schools are in closer proximity to the students' homes. So even though I'm not going to be on the school board, it's going to be something that I watch very carefully and something that for many years I have been, I have been supporting. So I guess that's one thing, and there are a few others, where I look back, even though I haven't been part of the team, so to speak, as I made abundantly clear a few minutes ago, that it's something that has come to fruition. And there are some other things, and I'll talk about those as time goes on. The thing that sustains me the most, though, being on this board and being on the school board, are the kids. And when we have the recognition, such as we had tonight with the Microsoft winners and SA video contest winners, and we always have wonderful student representatives that have outstanding GPAs and plus do amazing things for their school and community, the, it's amazing, the, the young cadets that come and present the colors. I think everyone that has presented in the years that I've been here have not only extraordinary service to their school and community, but they also maintain high academic levels. And so that's one of the things that really sustains me on this, as are the, the advances that we've had. This, this past year, we've been able to advance somewhat with teacher salary and salaries for Spock employees, et cetera, et cetera. Is it enough? No. But it's something that I'm going to continue to keep my eye on and continue to support because, yes, our administrators, school administrators, district administrators do an excellent job, but the teachers don't get paid the bucks that some of the others do, especially on district staff, not on, I know, market rate and, and all of that. So I'm not putting that down, but if you're going to do market rate on teachers, I think it's worth a heck of a lot more money than what we pay them, especially our veteran teachers who are the bedrock, the foundation of our schools, and who unfortunately we, and across the state and across the nation, continue to lose, and that's a very sad thing. So with that, I will climb off the soapbox and allow the next person to speak.
And I have no comments this evening. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. And Ms. Rhea, you are up.
I'm having a very strong fusk. Good evening. Thank you all for this opportunity and for the welcoming you've given me. I would like to appreciate this month's character word and getting to say it myself, of acceptance, because I think it is important to the motivation of students to feel like they are welcome in schools and that schools are a place for them to have expression and free will of what they learn and how they apply it to themselves and the people around them. This experience was very good for me. I enjoyed being here. I look forward to discussing more in the future our shared concerns about the being of our living school system, and I hope you all get home safe and dry tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first again, I would love to thank you, Rhea, for being here with us. Really appreciate you coming in and participating with us and your comments as well. I do want to say, I, Ms. Gittens had spoken about the event, and one of our principals, Mr. Forrest, goodness gracious, I just forgot his last name.
Is it Forrest Walker?
Forrest Walker, sorry. He became one of our, he was one of the ones recognized, and Mr. Middlebrooks, who's a longtime education, so they did, you know, look at the education as part of this program, which I thought was amazing, and I think they really got the biggest applause, actually, as well. They got standing ovations for a lot of us, anyway. And I know that the town hall meetings we've spoke about already, that's really going well. And I know Ms. Vaughn had spoken about teachers appreciation and all of that. I do want to say, because I had a meeting today, and someone is here from the Northport Myers Civic Association, they have adopted the teachers, a teacher from each of the schools in Northport Myers. And I know I've had other people speak on that, how do they get involved in, let's try and, as a community, let's go into the schools, and how do we help, help this further to assist the, especially the new teachers who come on and everything that they do. We also had the, as I spoke earlier today about the greater chamber, had come in today for some classes, and we took them down to the United Way Room. And just, and even speaking to that, we had, there was a call out, and I forgot to say this earlier, there was a call out for 400 pairs of shoes that we were short. So Laces of Love today brought 400 pairs of shoes in here for the elementary schools to meet that quota. So I just, I cannot thank them enough for that. They are out there, and so they, 400 pairs of shoes and 400 pairs of socks. So they are making sure that they are filling those coffers, and they are going back out there again to continue this. So it is about community engagement. It is about parent engagement, and I just really appreciate how everybody comes together to make sure that we have and our kids have what they need. And with that, Dr., oh, and watch out for all the kids too, because they're all running around. We have basketball going now, football, the storm is going in between all of that. So just, you know, pay attention to all the sports that are, are out there and our kids, because I know all my grandkids are out there playing, but they're active, and I really appreciate all the staff that's helping them to, to be better. Mr. Dupree-Burne, do you have any?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. B.
Well, between all of you, you've covered a lot of what I wanted to discuss tonight. So I'll start, first of all, by thanking the student who's here. We met and under the most unique circumstances, climbed off a bus at Oh God 30 in the morning. She was the first person getting ready to walk onboard. Just really appreciated the opportunity to get to know you. I was enthralled with my bus conversation from that moment forward. When we stopped at the first stop, nobody was awake. They, they literally crawled onto the bus, went to the back of the bus, and I think they were very, very tired moving forward. When you walked onto the bus, I had an amazing thought partner, and I felt like I was taking a bit of a quiz about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, Webb's depth of knowledge, because there's a great interest in becoming a school psychologist. I'm very excited to see you here and also to see your application for the Student Advisory Committee. I really appreciate that for the superintendent. Shout out to Mr. Henry, the bus driver, who I guess is responsible for us meeting. Just want to take a second to run down some dates. Yes, there's a town hall tomorrow. There's a town hall again on the 15th. To Ms. Gittens' question related to where are the others, I wanted to be responsive to that, and I'm definitely afraid I'm going to close out of something and then not be able to read it. There are additional sites for additional community conversations. One is coming up on September 27th at James Stevens Elementary School. The other is on October 6th at Northport Myers Academy for the Arts, and a following one on October 11th at Heights Elementary School. So the question was asked in the previous briefing about how I select. We're really trying to just move about each one of the zones, south, east, and west, trying to get to as many schools as possible and trying to bring the message of listen, learn, and then lead. So I'm still in that listening and learning phase, but I'm starting to develop some ideas, and I appreciate the group that came out to Cluase Elementary, who really said to me, you mean, you don't have the solution? I said, no, we're going to find the solution together. And I really appreciate that opportunity and for Dr. Malloy, who's helping to spearhead that, that approach. To a question that we received during public comment, school incentive funds have not been allocated most recently in the most recent years, but the state is potentially coming back to school recognition dollars. There are $100 per student that's on the rolls of the school if the school has graded an A, A school building or commendable under the SUR rating, or if they improve at least one grade level or one rating. That is a mutual decision for the faculty and the SAC to determine how to spend those dollars. They can be one-time bonuses to teachers, they can buy supplies, technology refreshes, or they can hire additional temporary personnel for a year, because it's a non-recurring fund, that would allow for those individuals to help support student achievement in areas where they feel like they still have work and other things they need to do. I know this will come in the board update as well, but I did receive an email during the meeting from Dr. Desmore at the budget meeting today, like I couldn't read the millage rate incorrectly, into the record correctly. I would say that she wants you to be aware that the impact fee collection rate that she spoke of, of 52.5% was not correct. The actual collection rate of that is 55% as of March of 2022. So there's a, there's a minor difference in terms of the amount, about a 2.5 difference in the figure she gave you, and I know it'll come in a board update as well. In terms of transportation, we continue to work through every transportation issue we have, including new teachers, sorry, new students who have registered, and we have trouble getting them to some of the schools that they have selected. We continue to work through those on a case-by-case basis and providing transportation where we can. I remind the public that we are 1,212 square miles with just about every choice option that we possibly could have related to where a child can go to school. That should be put in perspective with 1,214 square miles, which is the size of Rhode Island. Additionally, we have about 35,000-plus passengers per day and a lot of miles to cover. So we have some work to do, and that's one of the reasons we're talking about proximity plan and student enrollment. We have to make some decisions now going into '23, '24, or the situation, I know it's hard to believe, could get worse. So we want to make sure that we're of that. I also do want to recognize the gentleman that were recognized at Southwest Florida, Black Men Rocks. I echo the sentiments of our board member about Jared Eady's keynote and wanted to recognize Forrest Walker as a current employee who was recognized. Lastly, I would like to update all of you on just some quick dates. We mentioned the College Fair on September 19th. We mentioned the Vendor Fair, that is from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM on the September 27th. We have the Constitution Day upcoming on September 17th, and thank you to our speaker for the additional opportunities to learn more about our, our federal constitution. And finally, I wanted to get back to a board member, but we will also update you within the board update, and that is that, I've already spoken with our RT department, ACE, IB, AP scores can be added in focus, and we will begin to proceed with that work. There's just some work in terms of talking with the team before we're able to actually upload those, but we will get that done as well. There's so many other things that I could say, other than to say thank you to all of you. What you're seeing in front of this board tonight and what you've seen in the last several meetings represents a lot of extra work on their part, prepping for the meeting, dealing with a superintendent who calls them Thursdays and Fridays just about every week, has one-on-ones with them every other week. There's a lot of commitment of this board to making sure that our agendas are prepared and their questions are answered, and I just wanted to say thank you for the hard work of these board members that you don't see in the public eye, because they work very, very diligently behind the scenes to be prepared for meetings such as this. So I'll turn it back to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. Okay. The next scheduled meetings of the board, on Wednesday, September 14th, there will be a board workshop at 12:00 PM. On Tuesday, September 20th, there will be a board briefing at 1:00 PM, followed by a regular meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no other business, to come before this body and say no objections, this meeting is adjourned, and it is 7:29. Thank you and drive safe.